Welcome to this large audience tonight. Great to see you here. We are missing Commissioner Hatch and Commissioner Hatch has now arrived. We are missing Commissioner Thomas, but he did advise us that he would be absent tonight. This is the briefing meeting with the Planning Commission for West Jordan City, September 3rd, 2024, 5:30 PM. On the agenda tonight, we have to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. We will talk about copper rim Phase 3B deferral agreement. Have a public hearing regarding the Four Peaks Athletic Center. And then a discussion item on the senior housing overlay zone. Let's begin with a briefing on the copper rim Phase 3B deferral agreement. Larry, Taylor?
That one's going to be postponed till next meeting. They needed a document, so the motion in the staff report is just to postpone it to the next meeting.
Do we need a formal motion to postpone it, or just to say it's done?
Yeah, you could make a motion during the main meeting to postpone it.
During the main meeting, right. Okay, how about the Four Peaks Athletic Center?
Thank you Chair. This is just a site plan in the professional office zone for a recreation center. It's a basketball court. Well, it's more than a court. It's got five basketball courts, three shooting lanes, and some locker rooms. Yeah, shooting lanes, so they're just like basically hoops to practice free throws on.
Not guns.
And so, this would be for... You would anticipate youth athletics privately ran, similar to open court back in the day down in Lehigh before that closed. Similar concept. It's a permitted use. They seem to comply with all the standards of the professional office zone. We did take this to the DRC and they recommended approval. Have any questions, may I have?
Commissioner Allen?
I have two... Can you hear me now? Okay. I have two quick questions. First off, we're just generally, is there a... I'm assuming that they've done their research. They're putting the money into it. Is there a need in the city for this?
Um, they're thinking there is. As somebody who played youth basketball growing up, I know finding courts that weren't associated with like a religion were really difficult. And so, I think there's probably a need for that.
That's fair too. The second question is on the landscaping plan. I was just curious if you could remind me on the... What is the city code for trees and viewpoints? I'm most concerned about the one on this... The... So at the eastern entrance, the tree on the east side of that, and I look at how that road bends around there, and I just worry that that is going to block view of traffic, especially for somebody trying to turn left out of there. Does that... I'm assuming that meets the requirements for setting the tree back and being clear?
Yes, we've looked at everything through clear vision triangles. Both me and the engineer have looked at that as the traffic engineer and all the tree locations do comply. It's a little bit maybe misleading because there's a big gap there with like landscaping and stuff. And so the trees look like they're right on the road, but by the time you have the extra lawn and then the turn lanes and the bike lane or the shoulders, it's actually, there's quite a good vision there.
Okay, that helps. Thanks.
Thank you Taylor. Larry, senior discussion overlay zone.
So do you want to do the discussion now, or wait? We can do it now. I don't think it matters Duncan, when we do the discussion, does it? I think if they just acknowledge it during the meeting, so.
Yeah, I mean, you can have discussion here.
It's up to you Chair, whatever you want to do.
If we have the discussion now, that means our discussion during the regular meeting can be limited.
Yeah.
So, let's go ahead and lay it on us.
So, was asked last meeting to come back and talk about where exactly the senior housing overlay has been used in the city. And it's... It was actually used in seven properties, but of course, two of the properties were rezoned. One was Parker Place and the other was... I can't remember the name of it, but it's behind, it's on 5490, behind like this Sherwin-Williams paint. There's like, and Trish and somebody who's been here, you may have remembered that, and it'd be behind the... In that area, and they removed the senior housing overlay because Peterson, they didn't use the overlay on property, but on 4800 West, they're going to build a large senior project, similar to one that I'll show you here in a minute. And so the first property on the list is Brinkerhoff Bluffs, and this is 7658 South 1300 West. And it's 37 homes on nine acres. And this is a mixture of single-family homes. And as you can see on the north and west, there's two, four, six, seven twin homes. And the senior housing overlay was used to accommodate those twin homes. It's a very nice project. Turned out really well. And so that is one instance where it was used with the planned residential development medium zone. Then the senior housing overlay was placed upon that. And the second one is Sunset Villas, and that's at 7290 South Redwood. And one of the other zones the senior housing overlay could be used on is the R38 Zone. And this and the Parker Place, which was rezoned, or the senior housing overlay are the exact same zone. They're just a couple of properties away from each other on Redwood. And this is 17 homes on three acres. And seven of them are constructed. Sage Homes, who owns this now, they're just going to wait out the market until... Right now, it's not very favorable for people to move into senior housing unless they're cash ready to move in. But a lot of times, when senior housing was done in the past, you know, four or five years ago, interest rates were really an advantage for somebody that had equity. If they have enough equity to buy something, then there's no problem. But the problem is, is the new homes are as much as the existing homes anymore. And so, if they have to take a mortgage out, then it generally is a lot higher. And so, it's really kind of stalled the market for this type of development. But they're confident. They have no problem holding on to it and just waiting until the market recovers because they feel like that'll happen. The third property we can talk about is Sunridge Assisted Living, and that's in the R312 Zone. And this is actually a true assisted living center for seniors. And so it has the senior housing overlay, and that's right on the corner of 4800 South and 70... 4800 West and 70th South. And if you don't go that way a lot, I can understand because 70th South dead ends right at the airport at that point. So unless you're going on 4800 West, or if you live out in the area, you may know where this is at. And it's quite a nice project. And we had one more of these that was looking to do this, but it never quite panned out. But this is a true assisted living where the seniors actually live in their own unit. And then food is prepared in the cafeteria. They have a common, you know, place where they associate and that type of thing. And so, and this was done probably about 10 years ago now. It's been that long. And this is an old photo. Piravita is on 9353. So if you go off of Redwood Road up 9400 South to 2200, where a lot of senior housing is, what's the name of that? It's not Bridal Villas. It's Jordan Villas, Bridlewood Villas. They're all the four packs, as you can see on the west here. Piravita is exactly that same type of dwelling unit. And I drove by there the other day, and it's mostly constructed now. I think some are sold, but they're still under construction. But... So this photo is not accurate, but that's... I have to rely upon the tools that are provided me, so. So I don't have a drone, so I can't take a picture. But so it's going to be exactly what's to the west there. And so, and when this first... Mr. Hatch, were you on the planning commission when they were going to do the senior apartment there? Yeah, one time they were going to do 63-unit senior apartment, but then the financing on that didn't really work out. And so, they just decided to do the fourplexes, or the four homes with their garages. And it's been mostly constructed, as I said. Then the final one that's been zoned, SHO, and you're probably aware of this because it's where the Smiths, right on the corner of 2290 South. It's right south of the golf course, have the pumpkin patch, and they sell corn there, and it's a farmer's market. Or farmer's stand, that type of thing. But it's been rezoned east of the canal, professional office with the senior housing overlay for a few years now, probably four or five years at least. And at one time, both the property east of the canal and west of the canal, which is R312 SHO, they were going to construct a Alzheimer's dementia living facility at that location. It was quite large. There, you know, be hundreds of people living there. But that didn't quite... I guess the financing on that didn't quite work out, or they were relying on some grants that didn't... That kind of dried up. And so that kind of went away. And then they've come back a couple of times about doing senior apartments. But again, they're running into the same financing issues with that because interest rates are expensive. And it almost makes the rent more than the financing of the project. But they are... They're going to keep the zoning and someday it'll be developed. They feel a senior housing, you know? That's what they've said now, but that could change next week because we know. But there's been no talk about changing any of the zones on these two undeveloped properties, as in the others. So you can see about three of them have been... Two of them have been fully constructed, or three of them I should say. And then one partially constructed, and then one with no development at this point. So that's it for the senior housing overlay in the city, you know, other than the two that were rezoned. There is one on Redwood Road that was a senior. It's right in front of Willow Cove Apartments. It's still in the entitlement process, but we really haven't heard from them for quite a while. And I think, did it ever come to the planning commission? Did, yeah. Do you remember that? It was like a large senior apartment. But they haven't been back for a while. And you know, they had parking issues and utility issues. They're still trying to work out. But they still have an active application, so. So the tool, you know, it has worked. There's a couple instances where it hasn't worked. But, you know, I've spoken to colleagues in other communities south of here, and they've had the same issues. Things have been zoned, senior housing, and the people that can't or are not willing to wait have come back into rezoned property. So it's not unique to West Jordan that this is happening. We might think it is, but it really is not. And so, in my opinion, I think it's a good tool for when it's used. I think that, you know, my opinion lesson learned would be that we just be more careful about the entitlement of it, you know? See, probably a more developed plan before the entitlement is issued. So that's what I found, and I'll leave it up to you Chair to lead a discussion, or however you want to direct staff in the future. Or if you have any questions, Amelia, I'm here.
Thank you Larry. Anybody have any questions for him? Commissioner Allen?
I would like to know from staff's point of view, I mean, ask you to put yourselves in the shoes of the folks that are developing the property. What is it that they are gaining by getting the SHO that they wouldn't have otherwise that they're... There's the density, there's the parking, there's a few other things. Could you go through that list?
What was their ulterior motive, or their aim?
I... Yeah, I'm sorry. I guess there's two parts to that question. First is, just from a city code standpoint, what are all of the things they get if they get a senior house overlayed?
What you get is usually a home on a smaller lot. And the parking really is not so much reduced, you know, but because we still require two-car garage or two spaces, but that's it. I think that for when all of these properties were zoned, SHO, there was a market for it. And that was all the... You have to think, these people, that's what they do for a living. And so they look, well, here's a marketable project. Here's something I can develop and make a profit on. And God bless America, that's what we do here, you know? We're a capitalist nation and so... But, you know, 10 years ago, there was a huge market. All the hue and cry was is that, you know, the population's aging. Nobody wants to live in their home. They want to move into something that's more friendly to senior housing. But it just shows you how quickly the market changes. The interest rates go up. And the other thing is, is people could sell, take a lot of equity and buy something outright because the equity they had would pay for something. But that's no longer the case because what is being sold, what is being sold now is more expensive than what most equity people have in their homes. And so, it really is this market that is killing the profitability of the development. Nobody, you know, I never look at, if people come in and say they're doing something altruistically and doing this, then I get suspicious right off because I'm not saying there aren't people like that, but they're usually not. They're either state development business, if you know what I mean. To strike that from the minutes, please, your honor.
So Larry, one of the other advantages to the SHO overlay zone is it's an exemption or exception to the multifamily limitations, right? Our balanced housing ordinance that somebody could still have multifamily where, if it's senior housing, where otherwise they couldn't have it, right?
Yeah, but again, we've seen that the market forces have really even killed that because there's just other ways to go about developing and making a profit rather than... Because, you know, you still, even if you're building multifamily or single-family, you still have to build it and you still have to sell it. And so, it's a... But that is an advantage. That's an exception that the council put in, what, 12 years ago when they adopted? It was called the cap and grade at that time. Now it's balanced housing. But we did that for obvious purposes, you know, purposes that you're not discriminating against age groups and that. So, but that is an advantage to it, as Duncan said. But the market forces have just stalled a lot of this stuff right now, in my opinion. But I think all those advantages were put in by well-meaning council and planning commission, you know, to kind of incentivize this type of development.
Great. You just answered my other question. Thanks.
Larry, can you think of a... Of a project that has, where an SHO has been approved, where in retrospect you would say, we shouldn't have done that? It's not a trick question.
No. You know, not really. I don't... No, I can't because, you know, even this Sunset Villas, you know, is a very difficult piece to develop, as was Parker Place. No, I really can't, you know? I just can't. I don't think. I think they all have positive attributes to them. So now, I can answer that question on other developments, but not senior housing.
So from a city, from a planning perspective, it works?
Yeah, because, you know, I think the total is, you know, acre wise is like 9, 12, 15, 19, you know? 30, a little over 30 acres, you know? That's half a phase of Jones Ranch. It's like, it's just not huge. It's just not a huge piece of chunk out of the city if you think out of it in perspective. In fact, it's, you know, if you talk other cities, they'd say, well, that's a little because they have seen your... Some senior developments that are 50, 60 acres in size. I think the ones Julie mentioned, you know? That old Lehman's piece, I know that was 20. I think both of them were 20 acres put together, Bridal Villas and Jordan Villas. So I, in my opinion, the bigger the acreage, the better they work because it's a mass. It's a, you know, it's... The bigger it is, the HOA fees are lower, things are taken care of better, it's maintenance better. So, and to get back to your question now, I'm thinking of a little more, the smaller ones, I think, aside from the fact that they're single-family and everybody's responsible for their own yard, like Jordan Villas and Bridal Villas are all HOA maintained. And so I think the larger their HOA, the better. And so, you know, if we were doing any more in the future, that would be my recommendation to the planning commission. You know, make sure it's large enough to where everything is maintained commonly, and it looks nice all the time, and it's not putting a burden on the people that are living there. That would be my recommendation, so.
Thank you. Mr. Hatch?
So, you said there are only two properties that we've rezoned that already had, that we gave the SHO overlay to. Is that correct?
That I recall. Yeah, it's just the Parker Place. And what was the name of the one up on 5490? I can't... It still has the same name now. It's by Peterson. What was it? Highlands Landing?
I know, I know which one you mean, yeah. And then Sunset Villas, there are 17 homes going to be there, and seven have constructed. Are they building these homes, and you may not know the answer to this, as they are purchased? Or are they building speculatively that someone's going to come in?
No, Sage Homes, they're not a spec home builder. They only build it when they have order.
They have only had seven requests of the 17 lots?
And I think I may be wrong. I think a couple more permits are sold over the summer. There may be nine now.
Of the 17, so it's slow-going?
Yeah.
Okay. And just as, I like your comment about having it be large enough. You know, my little HOA, we have 32 homes. Fortunately, well, unfortunately, everyone's too old to serve on the HOA board. So, I mean, it's a serious problem because the same people get put on year after year because we can still function. But as a community ages, it's really, really hard to man that HOA board. So we definitely need more to choose from for that reason. I think I agree that we just need to manage it better and not make it just because. There needs to be really profound and concrete reasons why we give the SHO zone.
And, you know, one other thing that I haven't mentioned yet is that we have the senior housing overlay ordinance. We can't remove it from the books because you can see we have properties that are entitled to that. And, you know, and if the planning commission and council's desire was to stop using it, then we could do the same thing that we did to the W, or West Side Planning Area. It would just be limited to the acreage that's already zoned. But we can't remove it from the books because the last thing we want to do is create a non-conforming situation for these people because that, it's not troublesome to every bank, but there are many banks, particularly in the East Coast, that if they hear the word "non-conforming", they have real problem loaning because the laws in various states are so different for non-conforming uses that they won't even loan on a lot of them because they've been burned. But Utah's very, very friendly to non-conforming uses. If it burns down, it can be rebuilt completely. This has to be building code, but some banks just choose not. So it can run into an issue for a property owner if it's non-conforming, and so.
I'll show a little bit of naivety again, but who polices the SHO? Who's going to stop somebody that's not a senior from buying one of the lots and they're moving in?
That's up to the homeowner's organization.
So if the homeowners association all got together and said, "We don't care really who buys these homes", what good is it doing?
It's just adopted under that homeowners association. It would be a very bad thing for a city to go out and say, to try to do age discrimination because I'm not an attorney, but I think that I don't want to end up in federal court. I don't know Duncan, what you feel, but...
Well, most of these documents are recorded at the county recorder's office, right? The governing documents, the CCNRs, the bylaws, whatever the governing documents are, they're recorded at the county recorder's office. And generally, those documents stipulate how amendments can be made. So it's generally pretty difficult to change that. And we don't enforce those as a city, but a lot of times we do review those documents before they get recorded just to make sure there's nothing in them that's contrary or inconsistent with our city code and regulations. So hopefully that's responsive to your question, but...
So I personally dealt with quite a few HOAs, and in some cases, granted, these are all much, much older, but the HOA has just decided to dissolve. So in that kind of a situation, maybe an SHO overlay zone, but anybody could buy a house at that point in time if there's no HOA governing it.
Yeah, there's some fact patterns that could occur which would make it really difficult to enforce. There's no doubt about it.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gardner. We've got four, three or four minutes until the official meeting starts. So we will adjourn the briefing meeting and reconvene in somewhere between one and three minutes. It is six o'clock. Time to begin the meeting of the West Jordan City Planning Commission for September 3rd, 2024. All commissioners are present except Commissioner Thomas. He did advise us he would be absent today. Item number one is approval of the minutes from the August 20th meeting.
Nobody jumped at once.
Mr. Gonzalez?
I will go ahead and make a motion to approve the minutes from August 20th, 2024.
Commissioner Roberts?
I'll second that motion.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor? Thank you. Item number two, copper rim phase 3B deferral agreement. We've been advised that we can postpone this item. They're not ready to present here. So we need a motion to postpone this item. Commissioner Gonzalez?
I will go ahead and make a motion to postpone the copper rim phase 3B deferral agreement till the next meeting.
Commissioner Hatch? Thank you. Motion is made and seconded. All in favor? That motion passes. Item number three, public hearing regarding Four Peaks Athletic Center. Are you here to present? Step to the microphone there, give it, give us your name and give us a knockout presentation.
Do my best. Hi, everybody. My name is Nathan Bly. I'm with Uncommon Architects in Midvale. And the project I'm presenting is Four Peaks Athletic Center. This project is located at 7252 South Jordan Landing Boulevard, at the intersection of Jordan Landing Boulevard and Center Park Drive. The proposed project is roughly 43,500 square foot basketball facility on a site that's owned for professional office. The building is a single story building with a mechanical platform. The building is located along the east side of the site. And then along the west side of the site is surface parking with a trash enclosure along the south side of that surface parking. Along the east side of the site, there is a proposed retaining wall, just the way that grading happens to, you know, move across the site, we do have to have a retaining wall there. Additionally, along the west side of the site, we are proposing to connect the access road. That's currently unfinished there that, you know, served the credit union and the Hampton Inn. Let's see. Yeah, I'll just jump into some of the bullet points that the city's looking for. So the first one, bullet point A for, you know, connection to the context around. We think this, you know, recreational use serves as a good buffer between the industrial zone that's, you know, out further west with the airport and the commercial zone directly to the east. In terms of the impact on the surrounding buildings, our building height is 36 feet, nine inches tall, which is pretty consistent with, you know, the surrounding buildings and it's shorter than, you know, many of the surrounding buildings as well. In terms of, you know, its functional relationship, the building is pretty consistent with its location along the east side of the site, as many are, you know, located on the, along the street front there. Additionally, we, we put our parking in the back of the site and we have it screened with landscaping. And then there is a bus stop along the east side of the site, so there is good access to the site. In terms of material and form, this is a, this building is finished with metal finishes and the earth tones. We looked at the surrounding buildings and they all had, you know, those earth tone finishes and a variety of materials such as ephes, metal and masonry. We did also include bump outs along our facade just to sort of break up the rectangular rigidity of the building, provide more visual interest. Additionally, with our material, we do vary the orientation and thickness of the texture of the material as well as the color. The color that we are, colors we are proposing is a burnished slate. That's a darker brown color. And then an ash gray, which is like a grayish sort of tan color, which we, which we find to be sort of consistent with approaches of the adjacent buildings. In terms of circulation and traffic, as I mentioned before, connecting that that access road on the west side of the site will improve the circulation around our site and for the, you know, neighboring sites as well, while also providing access to our surface parking lot. See what else? One other thing I'd like to note is with the, with the bus stop, we do provide an ADA access connection. So anyone who gets off the bus stop, you know, you can get to the front door, really anywhere on the site with ADA access. And then lastly, with, you know, public facilities, we are making power, water, sewer connections so that, you know, we're fully operational on the site. We are adding a fire hydrant in the parking lot and providing, you know, the adequate fire sprinkler connections needed by the fire department. Yeah, so I'll sort of leave it there, but if you guys have any questions, happy to answer them and looking forward to working with you guys through this project.
Commissioner Hatch has a question for you.
Thank you for that. What, who is your target market? Who's your customer? Is it individuals? Is it teams? How are you marketing this?
Yeah, so it's primarily geared towards teams, you know, they can host, whether it's, you know, pick up basketball games for, for travel basketball teams. It can be rented to, you know, local, you know, whether it's high school, middle school basketball teams as extra practice facilities. There are also individual shooting lanes, so there is some marketing towards the individual. You know, if it's an individual who wants to go get shots up on a Thursday evening and, you know, they can do that, they can book time there. Go do that. And so really teams and individuals both as well, so.
And as far as parking goes, I'm, I have grandchildren who play group sports. And when everybody drives their separate car and you've got 11 people on a team, their parking goes quickly. So if you utilize all five of these courts with 10 players on each court, is, there's not enough parking to accommodate. So will you be structuring it so that there is some staggering? Or I just can see a massive parking issue with this.
Yeah, so we do anticipate, you know, games would be staggered. That way you don't have them all starting at the same time. You could move teams through very organized and so that way your parking doesn't overflow. So that is something that we've, we've thought about. Yeah, and I know just in terms of the parking, the, the goal is with, with the bus stopping there that some people do utilize that as a method of getting to and from. Obviously, you know, we do live in a very vehicular dominated society, so we understand that, but we do anticipate, yeah, trying to have our organization of, of games to help accommodate that. Yes.
I appreciate that. And then will you be selling memberships? I mean, how do people reserve spots? Is it?
Yeah, so, you know, that's probably a better question for our clients.
Sorry about that.
No, that's okay. My understanding is that there would be a sort of a membership access for them that you could go in. And I think it's, you know, something where you could, you know, if you wanted to go in and reserve one of the shooting lanes, you can go in online and reserve that. So I think it is a membership sort of deal. But I think, you know, they also might have flexibility where it's, if you didn't want to have a membership and do it on more of like a one-time basis or, you know, I think they'd probably be open to that too.
Thank you.
Commissioner Allen?
So I, a similar question to what Commissioner Hatch brought up with parking. And I forget the exact numbers. They're in the staff report. So, you know, I'm sure you've got them right off the top of your head. But what I recall was somewhere around like 170-ish parking stalls. Anyway, if you, your estimate for full use of the building was such that it was like six to seven people per vehicle that would be parked in order to make that happen. Now, I'm going to be looking toward Taylor a little bit because when he picks up the, the conversation, he's going to tell us that this meets code and it has the right number of stalls and everything like that, which is exactly what we're looking for. But I am just curious, that same level, do you anticipate people trying to park off to the side of the road throughout this? And maybe it's probably better for staff on this one, but how, how are we going to police it? That's the question I have.
Actually, that is a good question. We don't anticipate them parking off the side of the road because that would be, you know, that's a fire access and we, we don't want that. I know in terms of peak times of, you know, using, using the basketball facility, it would be like a Sunday afternoon. And so I know the neighboring site is a bank and we don't anticipate using their parking, but I think if there were overflow, it likely would probably be there versus on the side of the road, which again, not what we're anticipating or trying for, but that's just the reality I would foresee. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bly. We'll excuse you for the minute, for a moment, and listen to Taylor Jensen.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chair and Commission. I guess I'll start right into parking because that seems to be the hot topic of the night. Code requires one parking space per six people in occupancy load. So with their proposed 134 parking stalls, that'd be a total occupancy of 806. With their full build out and assuming all the courts are full at once, that is 794 people. So they're under that requirement. Now, I mentioned I played a lot of basketball growing up. It doesn't look like it, but I was this tall in sixth grade. So like I've played tons of competitive basketball. I've been to literally hundreds of these facilities around the west. And it's pretty common for, you know, the parent with the, the super large van to have the whole team show up. And the parents, you know, when you're playing five or six games a week, get sick of going. And so the parking lots are almost always underutilized. So I, I personally don't think it's going to be an issue. They do meet our code as well. So even if it was an issue, we're kind of out of luck there because they do comply. We did look at this according to our PO standards, looked at our law and bulk standards. As he mentioned, they comply with all of those landscaping, number of trees. We looked at clear vision, elevations, all of those things were reviewed and they have been found to be in compliance with those. Sorry. Next steps, if this gets approved tonight, they will still need to come back in with the final site plan. So that's where we're going to look at a lot of the engineering type stuff. Then approved construction drawings and a building permit, which will all happen at the staff level. And we are recommending approval. If you have any other questions, I'm very willing to answer those. Also, we have a public hearing for this, I believe, that we haven't had yet. Is that correct? Yeah.
I believe we heard earlier that the design, design review committee has looked at this.
They have. I was not there at the meetings. I can't say what happened. I was out with COVID, but Mark handled it and he came back and said it was approved. So.
Did they, did they raise any questions or concerns that you're aware of?
I actually asked Trish because I wasn't there.
I'm not on the design review committee.
Sorry, Emily or Tom? She used to be.
I, I do, can I interrupt us? I mean, while we're thinking about this, I love the fact that you were this tall in grade six. I was this tall at 10, so I feel your pain. I, I really appreciate.
It's close to being a professional athlete. Just stop going.
Me too. I appreciate that it's one parking stall per six persons, but I think that's a very slim demographic. I mean, it's, we're going to get all sorts of people using this facility. And it seems to me in every other athletic event I go to, there is never enough parking. 134 is awesome. That's, that's fantastic, but I just think we need to be aware that that might be an issue at some point in time. So thank you for that.
Any further questions for the applicant or for Taylor? Okay, and this item was noted for public hearing, so a public hearing is now open. If you're in the audience and wish to comment. And we do have somebody online.
Okay, it looks like Ryan Wilkerson.
Ryan Wilkerson?
Yes, hello?
Yes, you are, you are with us. We can hear you now. We, by, by rule, you're allowed three minutes to speak on this application.
Oh, thank you. I, I just had some questions for the presenter. He had mentioned that this building will serve as a buffer between the commercial space on the east and the industrial area on the west, including the airport. I, I was curious if the developers of this project had looked at the impact of the toxic lead emissions from the airport, especially considering that this will be a an athletic facility, there would, there will be some, you know, heavy breathing and things, I would imagine. With the expansion of the airport there, there's going to be, I would say at least double the, the amount of toxic lead emissions. The, the Environmental Protection Agency has called the lead emissions from single piston aircraft, which fly almost exclusively at that airport, an environmental catastrophe. This is actually going to be phased out beginning in 2030. It's that big of a problem. As we all know, leaded fuel has been banned worldwide since I believe the late 60s or early 70s because of all the problems it causes. And I was just curious if they were aware of this issue. It's funny to me that, that West Jordan City, this, this goes on over your community and has really since the airports existed. And as far as I know, there's never been any pushback at all against it, even though every scientific body on the planet for the last 50 plus years has condemned leaded fuel, especially can, you know, for, for children. And it was mentioned that there's going to be some teams and things, youth teams playing there. I was just curious if, if that impact had been anticipated or looked at at all. My guess is that it hasn't because I, I don't know if people just aren't aware of these issues or if they're just allowed to persist. Mayor, Mayor Burton out there confirmed to me that he has, has been tested for lead exposure, so I know it's a concern to him.
Ryan, your, your three minutes are up, sir. Thank you. Julie, anybody else?
There is one other person on the line, but their hand is not raised.
If you are online, will you raise your hand? If you're on phone, unmute so we can hear you?
They want, I don't know if they want to speak. Oh, yes, he does. Okay. So it is Tim.
Tim? Is there a Tim online?
It says Tim's iPhone.
Tim, can you hear me?
The hand was lowered, so.
Okay. Public hearing is now closed. Can anybody respond to the, to Ryan's concern? Commissioner Allen?
Maybe you're way outside of my lane. That airport is not anything to do with West Jordan, aside from residing in it. So it's not like we really have any thing that we can say about it, but we could ask the applicant if any studies were done regarding lead in the air in or around the site.
Yeah, happy to speak on that. No, no studies were done. We felt that the airport's far enough away that it's not, it's not directly over our property. We do anticipate having, or we will have conditioned. We do anticipate having, or we, we will have conditioned air and, you know, so we're not particularly concerned about that ourselves. But we do appreciate his concern and voicing it, so thank you.
Thank you. Well, the issue of toxic lead emissions from the airport is new to me. But it's, it's duly noted in the minutes. Any other questions? If not, we'll, we'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Allen.
I move that the planning commission approve a preliminary site plan for Four Peaks Athletic Center located at 7252 South Jordan Landing Boulevard, subject to all requirements of approval.
Commissioner Hollingsworth, well, Gonzalez, Gonzalez was up first.
I'll second that.
That makes three seconds. Motion has been made in second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Last item on the agenda is discussion regarding the senior housing overlay zone. This item was more thoroughly discussed in our briefing meeting, which took place at 5:30. Quite thoroughly discussed. So I guess the question now is, is there any further discussion to be had on that agenda item? Commissioner Roberts.
I kind of have a follow-up for a question that Commissioner Allen had asked, which is with regard to enforcement. My understanding through my experience in real estate is that the senior housing projects are pretty strictly regulated. And so if, what I'm wondering is about is the city's potential liability if we're not enforcing anything and the HOA kind of decides to abandon it. In theory, the, I think the inverse of what Commissioner Allen was wondering about, I'm wondering if it could happen where somebody comes in and says, this is a senior housing overlay. It's not being utilized that way. I'm a senior and it, you know, it's supposed to meet these criteria and I'm going to sue the city as a result. Any, any thoughts on that?
So Don, can I, I don't even play a very good attorney, so.
No, it's, it's a, it's an interesting question. Yeah, what if it all falls apart, so to speak, and somebody comes to the city and says, hey, you know, I bought this property and what are you, is the city going to do about it? Is that basically the question?
Yeah, where it's a zoning thing rather than a H O A thing.
Yeah, where it's kind of the city's zoned it that way and, and either the HOA board or whoever isn't enforcing it. It, it's a tough thing and I think it's going to be more and more of an issue as time goes by. I think we probably ought to look at what we'll, what we want to do. I mean, in, in part, I think with the staff, planning commission and council looking at the, that most recent text amendment, right? With HOA and other overlay zones, I think was at least a first attempt to look at, at least some plan for what happens if one of these goes awry, so to speak, one of these developments that's based on either the S H O or other overlay. I think it's probably got to be a continued discussion. The, the challenge I see with HOA boards in general, and a question came up the other day in, in our community on, on just a regular HOA question. There's, the state legislature has not identified any one governmental agency to deal with HOA issues. I mean, there is technically the, if I remember correctly, the Division of Corporations has some authority and they, which includes placing HOA information on their website. But as far as an ombudsman or someone that can be a mediator or, or that has actual authority from the state legislature to actually act on HOA problems and issues, to my knowledge, there isn't any agency that's been identified. And certainly cities don't really have the authority. Like I say, our only authority is to, is if someone, if an HOA governing document like C C N R's has something that's contrary to the city's code, we can intervene to make sure it's no longer consistent with, inconsistent with our code. But as far as issues between HOA residents, you know, owners or those owners versus their board, really the only mechanism to resolve those issues right now in state law is to, is a private lawsuit and put it in front of a judge, right? Which is unfortunate, you know, because, excuse me. With, with cities and other local governments, there are checks and balances. There's options. There are, you know, all kinds of governmental entities that have oversight authority over cities and local governments. It is a strange notion that our state legislature hasn't put the same types of checks and balances over HOAs, especially when I think there's a lot more of an ability for problems to transpire, right? Especially if funds aren't being used properly. How do you enforce it if you can't get elected? And if you show up to the board and if you show up to meetings and nobody listens to you, really all you can do is hire an attorney and, you know, I think they're tough cases to win, right? So anyway, I probably ran afoul of, of answering your question perhaps, but that's the best answer I can give you. But I think we're on the right path as far as at least minimizing the potential for problems, at least with this one text amendment. But I think there's more we can do, maybe. But yeah, I think, yeah, your concern is, does the city have liability, right? If something happens. Well, liability generally transpires when you have a duty and you fail in that duty, right? It's kind of hard for someone to make an argument that we failed in a duty that we don't have, right? So that is at least our one defense. It's kind of a sad defense, but a defense nonetheless, right? I mean, in a perfect world, the legislature would give somebody the authority. And, and then if that entity, whether it's the city, if it's the Division of Corporations, if it's somebody else, you know, then, then you'd have a mechanism to follow through. But I mean, it cuts both ways, right? You either have the authority or you don't. And if you have it, you should use it responsibly. But if you don't have it, you can't use it, right? It's, it's really a crazy position that we've put in, been put in. But it, but it's, the city really can't get in the middle of private property disputes, right? And, and people don't like to hear that. They don't like to hear that, well, I'm, you know, being mistreated by my HOA board and I don't have money to hire a private attorney and the Division of Corporations says they don't have the authority either. They can just give me information and, you know, but the HOA board isn't spending the money on the parking lot, for the parking lot, on the parking lot. Or they're not, they're raising dues, but we don't know what they're doing with the dues because they won't report it. And why won't you as a city do something? Well, we can't. And, but nobody wants to hear that, right? Because everybody thinks the city has unfettered authority to do all kinds of things, which we just don't, you know, in all circumstances. So I think we keep looking at those areas where we do have some authority. Like, like I say, that S H O overlay and other overlay text amendment we just, we just adopted, that's an area where we do have some authority. I think we just need to identify those other limited areas and work on those. But as far as getting, you know, there's just certain areas that we just can't do anything about, like getting in the middle of private property disputes, right? Yeah. That's, that's kind of a roundabout way of kind of answering, maybe not answering your question, but it's the best I can do under the circumstances. I, the other thing that somebody could do is they could lobby the state legislature to actually create an authority that could do something. That, to me, is the best way to solve the, the problem.
So a little follow-up on that. Given that this is actual zoning and code enforcement, is there a mechanism in code enforcement? I understand what you just said and it's really muddy, but I'm, I'm just wondering if somebody could make a zoning and code complaint based on?
And that's a good line of thinking because then at least you're looking at possibilities where the city really does have some authority, right? Zoning definitely, zoning enforcement possibly, or code enforcement. And then that's where I think we need to get creative and look at options. And that's certainly what we did with this last text amendment, right? Is it was a way that the city can, in essence, follow through on its zoning authority and cut off the ability for someone to circumvent the code and those kinds of things. So, yeah, I don't know what all the answers are, but I think you're on the right track of helping. Because sometimes people start brainstorming and they go into realms that we don't even have authority on. Your line of thinking, I think, is more likely to come up with some additional solutions where we do have authority. And it has to be about defending the authority we've definitely been given by the state legislature, right? So, yeah, no, I think that's, that's a great, a great line of thinking.
Thank you. Do we need to take any formal action on this item? I don't think we do, but.
Only if there's some direction you want to give me. But there's no formal action. I can just take direction from the planning commission if you feel like there's something that's needed.
Okay. In that case, we've completed our agenda. I have no idea though how to get out of this meeting without Commissioner Thomas here.
I think we have to play odds and evens or something for the motion.
Ready, set, go. Commissioner Roberts.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned. Thank you.